Before we get everything rolling, I know you're all not here to tell me how good my new shirt looks.[26.31][26.31][laughter] So, if we could, uh, care about turn your cell phones off, radios, alarms, bells, and everything like that before we start. And we will address all your questions. Just, you would raise your hand, ask to be recognized, let's not all... Trust, it's legal to you? We'll get to all your questions, let's not talk over each other. Let's organize if we can. Okay. Number one approval of minutes June 9th, 2015.
Second.
I make the motion to accept the minutes June 9th, 2015, and send to all of our packages.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Four and up. Okay. New business? First is Stacy Jones regarding the Tiff ordinance. Stacy, business? Number two, we'll resolve such issue on your, Roseanne West Smith. Page seven, South.
We are looking to purchase, um, this lot, and because it had a mobile home spot already there, and we would like its permission to move our current mobile homes, but, uh, I had a picture of it.
Did they give you a copy of the ordinance?
Yes. In the aerial of the lot, this was actually the whole lot, with the stop truck.
What year?
Two thousand and seven. Is that... Yes.
Providence, New Orleans State's five years.
Section B, in place of a mobile home, you want to set a home, it shall not be locally close to anything bigger. And so, some, uh, some type of single block being skirted, and as a, our persistent area, the mobile home will be five years or newer to the title, and hit up there by the name of the manufacturer. I think it's clear in ordinance that, uh, a mobile that is older than five years can't be placed in the ground. Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, that's...
I'd like to see it. Rosa, is this a double wide modular?
Joyce, you didn't raise your hand, I'm gonna come out there and get you.
No.
No, Joyce, hell, Joanne! Same person. And last, anybody who wants to make a amendment on the ordinance?
I... That is a lovely looking home, actually. Looks like it's been well kept. I think that might be something this council needs to visit, to revisit, maybe. I don't know.
Have you purchased this yet? Is this already involved?
Uh, we live in town.
You live in the town, you just wanted to move it.
Where's the location of the property? It said, uh, generally said, all permanent locations, nine years. We bought it right here.
I, uh, my, my view on this, on this modular home or, or double wide is, uh, probably as a council, we need to, we need to visit this five years newer. The language of that on a, uh, on a double wide modular, as, as this is here, I think it's probably expensive to buy, to buy a double wide five years newer. I would entertain more input into this. Is this something we need to take a look at as a council when we're looking at the double wides? Or, obviously, there shouldn't be any brought into the, into the business district, the Tiff district, but outside like this, should we look at this, the language in our ordinance, again, that's a question I have.
With all due respect to you guys, that is finally, um, the problem I, I have with that is we passed this ordinance a year ago, and people have been denied because of it. So, it's hard to revisit something that went to effect a year ago, and we've been denied. As much as I'd like to do it, it's just one of those things where... If we change every ordinance for every different individual, then we're gonna fall into a line...
Mayor, I just wanna make sure that we really have gotten this right.
Well, at least three courts were messed up a year, is the problem, honestly.
I, uh, I caused a sale at that time, yeah. Yeah. But that was a single, was a single wide?
It was a year, I mean, uh...
It was just a year?
I mean, I agree with this one, it's just got some issues. But... It's a slipper.
We are being, um, invaded from our place, this is our last home, we have seven children.
I realize that. It's a hard call.
My name is Mary Kit, I am actually not in the city of Granby, but I feel that way, on First Street outside, I have rentals. And sometimes, as we age, age isn't a factor, it's the upkeep. Maybe these folks have value, maybe it's a value that we need to think about putting on this mobile, rather than an age. It's just a thought.
And the, the problem with that, okay, we can just shut them. The problem with that is, is, uh... As much as I sympathize, whenever an ordinance is put into action, there has to be careful consideration. And we have to consider the entire community. I've seen...
How is this hurting the community? We're having to bring in money for the community and our children.
Granby has been run roughshod for years. This trailer house ordinance has been instated, reinstated, dropped, at one point, there's, uh, ordinance, zero tolerance, no trailer house.
And that was the last ordinance before it was introduced to us. We tried to break loose from that, uh, still maintain a, a good, um, mobile ordinance, I guess we'll try to, but yeah. My question here was, and it's probably, I don't think it should have bothered them, uh, is, is on the age and, and the double wide, is there a different consideration than the singles, the older singles? I understand that as the language states, nothing in the Tiff district.
The problem with that is... It should have been roughshod for a year.
Yeah.
Because, uh, in all fairness, I know we've burned too deep for that.
I just, Mayor, I've got something I wanna say about this. I see a single wide...
Don't give up.
Oh, I know.
Mobile home as a trailer. Single wide, I don't care if it's eight feet, or if it's sixteen feet wide, it's still a mobile home. But when you are, when you start talking about setting up a foundation and putting a modular, two pieces or three pieces together to make a home, um, it may not qualify as a stick house, but it would seem to me that it should hold some more importance to us than just a single wide. And that's just how I feel about it. And so, if, uh, and I was not here when, when you all made up the ordinance, okay? Because I'd argued with you, but...
Well, I guess the, the actual, what it comes to, obviously, I have no say in it. If you guys wanna change it, that's fine, but, uh, you're setting the precedent.
I've, I've seen numerous transactions over the years through this town, um, I'm, I represent these people as their realtor in this transaction, um, and I, I think, and I also have lived in this town for twenty-plus years. Um, but, uh, my concern is, obviously, I mean, by looking at the picture, I mean, I'm not looking at it, but you guys are, um, it, to me, it would be a crying shame to turn down some people that were obviously well-kept, well-kept home, um, in the community. Um, it would be revenue for the town, not only in tax money, sales tax, um, and bringing good, good people, or good family into the community. Um, I've also, um, seen through the years, when there was a no tolerance, um, I had some people that tried to buy a lot and put a brand-new modular home. And so, I mean, I've watched tax revenue for this town be just thrown and flushed down the toilet so many times, and, you know, and good, good people, you know, be shoved out of this town or not allowed to come in. And to me, it's a crying shame, um, and I, I think that it would be, it would behoove the city to reconsider it, just like it's been suggested. And I think it would be, um, very... Non-beneficial is the best word I could think of at the moment. Um, non-beneficial to this town, to not consider that, and, and to not take that into consideration.
Well, to clarify something. This is step one. Step two is it has to be posted, then there's a public hearing. If there's a neighbor within so many feet of him who doesn't want it, it's out of our hands altogether.
Sure.
So, it's not like tonight, we can say, "Yeah, you can put it in," and we'll do it.
So, what is the process that needs to be done to, to be able to do this, then? Clear cut?
Well, it was a, it was quite a process to get it to the point it is now. We tried to, we tried to bring this off of the no tolerance into a spot where if you, if you bought a good, a good home, which was five years or newer, and you could bring it into town in certain conditions, in certain areas. Uh, the problem here is, this is how the ordinance has been set, and as a, as a council, we can't vary from that in our, in the way we do business. The only thing that we can do is make adjustments to the ordinance, which would be, um, the best that could happen. What I was saying was, probably we were, um, we, I guess, was assuming that the five years would carry those decent places and bring them in, and there had to be a, a year set there somewhere, somehow, or it would just be a chaos again.
Yeah.
That was our intention, or had good intentions, even though sometimes it'll prove out some good.
And that, and that's the bad, but even if something's ten years old, I mean, it could, it could look twenty thousand times better than some of the current properties that we have here in this town. And, I mean, and to me, that is the goal of, of any of those ordinances, is to make our town look better. And if you're shoving out people that are going to make our town look better, then, then the goal is, has not only not been reached, but it's been defeated.
Hang on just a second, did you have a comment?
I wanted to say, we have a modular home, it's outside of the town, we've had ours, it's a ninety-seven, we bought it brand-new. It is on a foundation, and you were talking stick home versus mobile home. Ours is considered stick home, we have a stick home policy on it with insurance, and, uh, I don't see why they couldn't do the same thing. I mean, if you're comparing...
The newer modulators now are two by six walls instead of two by four.
Exactly, they're thicker than a home, than a house wall.
R is two by six.
They're thicker than a, a regular stick home.
Exactly.
And our insurance company is a regular stick home policy, it's not a mobile home policy.
Not a policy, do you guys, do you guys have?
We're with auto owners.
We just have a mobile home, we don't own a property.
Which is what they were trying to change.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to buy that land, and we can get it all to come back.
Hartley, is this considered stick home, um, policy-wise?
Um, sure. It just depends on what insurance company...
Depends on the insurance company.
It depends somewhat if it has a title, and if the underneath side, does it have a title? It's metal or it's wood? Then, and if the underneath side's wood or metal? And that's the only difference. Is it wood or metal underneath?
Steel.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a mobile, it's not a modular, it's a, right?
I beg to differ with you, ours is metal, and we have a stick home, and we have a stick home policy.
This is no for all financing purposes, I'm just...
Well, I've been living in Granby, around here for fifty years, but on the rest here, uh, I have seen one that had no quote, no tolerance. And in two thousand and four, my wife's net ill niece went ahead and moved a mobile, mobile home, and I thought it was just fine here. And then when I was, I had an old chicken house, which was right on the line, and essentially, I told her, "If the chicken house goes, I'm not gonna allow her to move it in." And what happens is the Granby City Council at the time violated their own damned ordinance, and I got arrested, you know, it's spent the night in jail, because they didn't want to go through their own law.
Let's, let's stay on point.
But my point is that, hey, it's whatever, you know, whatever, whoever's in power, they decide whatever the hell the law is here. I disagree with you, I have a bunch of real old homes here, I don't wanna fix them up. But, this, you know, this thing has gone and passed and been enforced by whoever is in power at the moment. This bunch could probably go ahead and sue Granby and eventually put their house in, but they don't have the money for that. With seven kids, I don't think they can afford any better house.
Let's stay on point.
I am on point, Travis.
Well, as far as discussion on this, your regions in the past?
I know, the past is always the same, it never changes. My point, my point is, Travis, is that, hey, you can go ahead and get rid of this law here. What you're doing, talking about fixing up Granby or bringing in something, you have a family with seven kids who essentially do not have the money, and you are saying, "Well, our law is sacred." No, it ain't sacred, it's never been sacred, it's always been whatever the hell you want to do at the time.
Martin, have a seat.
Sure, you haven't chased the damn debt, Travis. Now you've chased the debt. I know you have, you're the same old bunch.
So, what is the timeframe for any amendment, do you think amendments should be ordered?
Somebody has to make a motion, tell them to deal with this. Martin, to address your issue, in some aspects, yeah, things do change all the time. I'm trying to uphold an ordinance that was legally passed. I do sympathize with them, but just because somebody comes into town and wants a speed limit changed to a hundred and fifty, I'm not gonna bend over for them.
That isn't, that isn't the point.
That is the...
No, it is not the point. It is whatever you want to think of it.
Listen, I will not sit and banny work.
I know you will, you're in power now. One of these days, one of these days, you won't be in power.
And one of these days, very soon, I will have you removed, bring you out first. So, mind your manners.
I am minding my manners.
Okay, this is a public meeting.
You brought it back up again, you brought it back up again, Travis.
And I will, I have the benefit of having the last word, sir. So, that being said, this is to conduct city business, not for you to get up and go on a rant about it. Thank you. Sir?
Um, I just wanted to say, um, as far as your community goes, what's best for the community, um, there's a lot of, I asked my wife to explain the issues, we'll say, there's a lot of young couples I've seen in the last three months coming to town and buy houses, and, and it motivates me to see young professional couples moving to town, because that gives the town some future, and this is future right here, too. This is a young, professional, motivated couple, um, they have a nice home, they're trying to move to town. And I think it would be a shame to, to not look at the current policy. And I think it, it impacts the board a little bit to tie your hands to the point that they've been tied. I know you have to sign to a degree, and you have to come up with a year. I, I would, I would look at a policy that was built more on a case-by-case scenario.
Really can, can enforce more than...
The problem, the problem I see with that, and I agree with the same in part, but the problem I see is, that brings every individual to the, to the council, and we make decisions yes or no, just based on what we see.
And then you gotta...
And it's not, it's not fair to the individual or us. If we have a, a policy that is set in stone, so to speak, then we just, we go off of that. Now, if those things need to be adjusted some, then that's, that's within the law. But to, to just pick and choose whoever comes to the podium, I don't know if that would be...
Well, that's...
A very good idea at all.
Either, you either go ahead and get the law, and you have to defend it, but the problem of this is that I don't think your current law is defendable if anybody wants to go ahead and challenge it in court.
So, whatever ordinance we got...
So, maybe it needs to be on the lines of like, what, ten years?
Yeah, there are variables, the, the condition of the unit, and you look at, at ten years or newer, the condition of the unit, some of those units, ten years, are just trash, you've probably seen them. Some of them, in this town, there are units that can get up and look pristine, and some, I don't even think they'd make it full out of town.
You got houses like that here.
That could be five or newer, you know, as far as that goes.
Which could be, which could be, no matter what the age, is how you take care of it.
Right.
Daryl?
Yeah, I'm not speaking in one way or the other, I'm just gonna share with you a procedurally options you have. The city can do what's known as a variance, which you can put conditions on the mobile, okay? They're old, older than ten years, but it's gonna be on a concrete foundation, X, Y, and Z, whatever you might wanna make it, as an additional condition to vary from your ordinance, but it'd have to be passed approved to the board. You might have to do that at another meeting, but you can do what's known as a variance to your ordinance. Just a choice.
Sorry. This piece of property they're talking about, it is, all of the water lines, there used to be a double modular home there on it, that kinda makes that pot, piece of property useless unless somebody does bring in brand-new, almost normal home. Because, you know, or build a home there, but, I mean, the piece of property they're talking about, which I know you're aware of what it is, had a very nice double wide there several years ago, veteran a lot of pieces of property in this town.
When we put this ordinance together, we tried to, like I say, you can't see in the future...
That's true.
Uh, any law that's ever been made, there's always the, I wish we'd done this to them. But, like I say, none of us have crystal ball. With, if somebody wants to make a motion, somebody wants a second, we can revisit this, uh, that's fine. But, what this was trying, what we were trying to achieve here is, and this is a special case, I understand, you've got a good-looking house, all that stuff. But, if we, if we don't set some kind of guidelines, okay, then we will be having the same conversation from you whenever somebody moves one in that's about to fall down on the door. That's what we're trying to protect. I realize all laws hurt good people, they do. And, but, you know, a year ago, when we were putting this together, everybody was complaining about all the trailer houses. You know, "Why are you guys letting these in? Why are you doing this?" So, we tried to put something together, and now here we sit, "Why are you guys doing this?" There are some no-win situations, and this isn't one. And, uh, I agree, you know, it would be great if you could take things, and under Darrell's advice, but we can't, if we sit here and say, "Well, you know, this is my cousin or brother or whatever, and so let's let this happen." It just, it's a slippery slope, and it turns into chaos. And that is just, whether anybody really wants to own up to it, that's just our problem, and it has been for years. And I, and I've realized that, you know, you've got your own lines standing somewhere, or... I hate to use this language, don't bet you about what the town looks like. You know, it's gotta be one way or another, this is a special circumstance, it isn't, but, like I say, you can't have it both ways, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, even if, if they're adjusted, even if the year is adjusted, let's say from five to ten years, versus, I mean, ten years versus five now, um, it's still on a case-by-case basis, because they have to still come and bring a picture to you guys, and it still has to be approved. So, so, and essentially, I mean, you guys still aren't going to allow, even if that, even if that is amended, you as a council are still not going to allow trash to come into our town. True?
Well, the way, and, uh, we've got a new city court, uh, but, since you all think we wasted so many of your time on that.
Hmm, I think I paid an attorney and was told that I probably could do it, but you know what? You had to pick and choose that battle. I think you guys are trying to clean up town, and you know, we tried to help clean up town, too, regardless of what they look like. I dozed that heel and did everything. I think that, I hate to say it, but I really think that you either have to decide to stick with it or not stick with it, guys, and I know it sucks, but it's gonna suck for somebody one way or the other, anyway.
And, in, in the future, uh, probably what should have been done is to say, and I'm not trying to get out of this whatsoever, but in the future, Alyssa's new, and this is the first time she's had to handle this, uh, you know, the ordinance needs to be, just, when somebody comes in and wants to do this, read, understand it, and if it doesn't meet the criteria initially, then it should never make it this far.
Well, some, they visited with someone down at City Hall, and, I mean, to my knowledge, and they had said that they had met all the criteria. I did, too. And that's why I came... Which is why they're here. I was told the same thing.
Well, like I say, we'll get all that squared up, but like I say, the ordinance, it does clarify the state.
May I say something?
Sure.
Um, I didn't deal with you directly, I'm sure you dealt with you directly, I know I gave you probably the ordinance.
Yeah.
And so, um, my thought is that you did have the ordinance that, that stated that it was a five-year or newer, so that's why I assumed you were here, was to try to, are they required to come if they, if they meet all the criteria?
I mean, yeah, yeah, and like I say, this is the first step, several, that, you know, then it's posted, then there's a public hearing, and then... And like I say, the, this is just the first segment, and the ordinance. Like I say, if any of the property owners are around, but then so many of you object to it, and...
Yeah, and I'm not, I mean, and even, even aside from this couple, um, I mean, this, this has come up in thirteen years, over and over and over, and I've seen good couples, good families, good even single people, clean peoples. Um, and, and it's been a very huge frustration for me, even as a citizen of, of this town, um, because I, I see trash, I mean, all, all over this town.
And we're working on that, too.
You know, but to see somebody that's not, try to come into this town and get... You know, but to see somebody that's not, try to come into this town and get rejected, it, that is frustrating.
But, on the other hand, with the trash, the brush, all that stuff, uh, you know, there, the ordinance gets that too. So do we not enforce it?
Well, and even, even if it's not trashy, I mean, you take a, a newer home that would've been very well taken care of versus something that's dilapidated, I mean, and, I mean, it's like, okay, what's gonna make our town look better? I mean, do, do we?
Travis, I have a question.
Sure.
Wes said that they have current, currently they have mobile insurance on it. They could not get, and correct me Wes, if I'm wrong, they could not get stick and mortar insurance because they did not own the land. If they buy this, you know, if they can buy this land and put a foundation out there and provide, prove that they can get brick and mortar.
It's still got a title. It's still got a title.
If they own the land, it wouldn't have a title if we want to stay.
You can surrender your title.
Exactly. Cause ours is considered real estate.
Said, okay, we'll go with that. That's.
But anyway, so what's the next step?
But, that's not the case, I mean, the point I'm trying to make here is, what ordinances do we choose to enforce, and what ones do we turn blind eye to and change every time somebody comes in?
Travis, I don't think it's matter, uh, turning a blind eye. I'm thinking maybe at some point, we need to see if this is the language that's for this. Uh, it says mobile, does it say mobile? I can't remember. But, if it does, to me, like I said before, a mobile is like a.
Says manufacturer.
A manufacturer, okay. But a lot of manufactured homes, uh, they'll come in with all the walls on flatbed trucks and put it together in a single day. That's a manufactured home also, but it's stick and mortar.
Well, we can debate this all night.
But, yes, but that's what I'm saying, we might wanna look at the language at some point later.
Okay, so, do we look at it later and turn them down now, or, what, what, I mean, that, that's the whole problem with this kids, this ordinance was passed and then people turned down it. So what do we tell them?
Same thing we told the others, we have an ordinance, we have to live with it.
So.
Whether we like it or not.
I'm not pro or con either way, it's, it's, it's hard to sit here and, and say, well, if we're gonna revisit this ordinance, you know, if someone comes in with a nineteen sixty airstream that looks brand new, so do we, okay, now they can be fifty years old.
There, there are times, I guess as a council, we do need to revisit sometimes the ordinances because of, you know, new, new things that happen, new, new, uh, procedures and stuff, that would be different, the shape of town, the different ways we, we do business. Uh, like I said, like I said before, I, uh, my assumption when we draw this up last year was that the five years would accommodate most families that would come in and bring their home, it would be a relatively, uh, newer unit. I, I was, I always questioned the five years, I thought, at, at five years, uh, can you buy a five year, uh, used home reasonable enough to make it work for you as a, as a new family? And I, at the time, I thought, well, would have ten years been better for us as a town. I think most of the language is good in our ordinance. I think the, the mobiles outside of the, and not, not being in the Tiff district was positive for, for business. I think the single wides, single wides, other than the, inside the.
Something, I think that I laughed at.
Parts was, was a positive, positive, uh, part of the ordinance. I guess as a, as a council, uh, we have to, we have to have our, our hand on the heartbeat of what's going on in town, I believe. And, uh, ordinances do help us with, um, not having to really deal with the personal, personal role of this. But there's a part of what we do is personal. I would, as a, as a council, I like, I would like to see parts of the, the year, year, at least the year of the double, double wides changed in our ordinance, and I think we should as the council, this is my view, is to look at that language again. And I would make a, I would make a motion.
Why don't you boys just look at it?
I wanna revisit the language of this, because at the end of the day, whether we did it last year, we're gonna have to make some adjustments this year. I think for long term, we're gonna have to get this right, and I don't know that it's quite right, and that's just my view, I'm just one part of this.
Is there a second question?
Uh, to revisit the language of this next meeting, to, to study out what we've got on, on hand here, and to see whether the, uh, if we back this up to ten years, would work for new families coming in. We're still set at, at no singles in town, other than in a, in a court we're talking about, right now we're talking about.
We have a vote, is there a second?
Now do what? How is reading another ordinance?
We have a motion.
To revisit the.
Yes.
The language.
Well, yeah, but let me inform you all that, you know, these people are on a timeframe.
I understand.
So, you know, when, when do you guys choose to revisit this? Like I say, if it's, bear with me a second, if it is changed, you're still looking at probably a two to three week period after that for, uh, posting, hearing, all that, so I don't know what timeframe you guys have got, or where you gotta live. So. Did you second it?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Joyce, are you gonna vote for it, you seconded it?
Yes.
We'll stick your hand up there.
I'm thinking.
We have two, four, few, nine. This puts me on the bubble.
Did you ask, did you ask what the name?
No vote.
Hey, Luis has another question, sorry.
Glad you got through that.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe he would open and make his mind up.
Well, forgive me for what I'm about to do, but, we passed this ordinance, I think, uh, if anyone had any second thoughts or anything at the time, it should've been brought up at the time when it was passed, we have rejected other people. This has been tossed around for years, and I apologize, but I'm gonna have to vote no.
Hey Travis. Um, you know, you guys were just talking about manufactured home, mobile home. If it's a manufactured home, is it considered a mobile home? Cause manufactured homes, from what I understood, were homes.
Well, I also would like to point out, because they were also told, um, that they met the criteria, they've already ordered an appraisal through their bank, and, and also ordered a survey.
Why can't help that?
No, no, but someone in the city.
No, let me explain something, they were given a copy of the ordinance, and if they, if it was read.
If they, if they did read the ordinance and understand that it's, I mean, I can't say that they were reading it. Okay, let's go.
Can I sit down, Marjorie?
This license, uh, four forty-six, actually that is supposed to be four forty-eight, so. You'll get a copy. No, it sounds like it goes all the way down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I make a motion, go ahead, granted business license for Murphy Auto Repair, at four forty-eight North Main.
We could, cut it, keep it, please. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, in a second, all in favor?
Number four, Mr. Redd, like. Well, you, you got all the information there, unless you want to get, answer questions.
Did, uh, did, or does this require a, um, application for a volunteer or a? Do they feel that application, or they're willing to serve as a volunteer?
Yeah, they do.
Okay, I just didn't see it. I think these three are familiar with the responsibilities involved in what they, what you guys do.
We interviewed the, uh, the ones that were.
I would like to, at some point in the near future, for the council as a whole, to meet with the police board and just kinda chit chat. Go. I think there's been a lot of misconceptions, the police board's job actually is something that you asked about earlier, make sure it's clear that everyone's open minded and objective to what's going on, not let personal issues get involved with it. And what I've read of the ordinance, I mean, basically, you guys' board is to pick a police chief and, uh, approve officers, correct?
Screening personnel that come in.
I know that the, the criteria's changed over the years from tit to tat. Cause there would be probably repression to everyone to get together, so the board itself, and you guys were all on the same page. So I've got about two left.
I make a motion to accept Tim Murphy, Bill Burris, and Jim Nast to the police board.
Yes, you give the chair.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? Number five. Update on voting, this round, I do double. Danny, I know you're here to talk about the audit.
No, I just worried about you guys, what the, uh, real, people own, uh, real estate in this town, pay somebody else's bills, what I wasn't about.
Me too.
Well, what are, what we, let me kinda.
You wanna sit up here and I'll sit up?
Skin surgery.
I like Susie.
At the last meeting we had.
Let's do.
We discussed this. Utilities passed due, go with twenty-two thousand.
That is my, my problem.
It's all my problems.
That's right, it is.
I mean, it's, uh, it's our problems for.
If city would go, but, go get people that owe them, we wouldn't have this problem, and not let them go so far before they get behind so far.
I agree. Now, let me clarify something going into this. I think there was a lot of misconceptions about the newspaper board. It was, uh, it was stated as it was stated, I'm not saying Chad printed the thing that, that wasn't stated. There is a Missouri State statute that addresses this very clearly, and just to ease everyone's mind, that rental property, that statute states that after thirty days, if, if you have a rental property, okay, after thirty days, we have to make a good faith effort to contact the property owner to inform them that the utilities are passed due, okay? Let me get a little bit ahead of myself, after thirty days, the utilities are gonna shut off, okay? So basically, what you risk is one month utilities, okay?
You would have to deposit for that, don't you?
Yeah, we do, but what the utilities.
To make your deposit bigger.
Oh my, that gas deposit's ridiculous.
Yes.
And so what is the current deposit now?
I've never, I've never one time received a notification from the city stating that my renter was behind thirty days.
That's, that's right, you have, but you will from this point on, that's what this is all about.
Yeah, but we don't have to pass that, we don't have to do that.
It's a state statute.
No, but you get, that, city does not have to do that.
Once again, um, we just declined revenue for our town, and we're saying that we need revenue for our town, but we just rejected them out the door.
I have a question, why am I even responsible for somebody else's bill that I have no control over? I can't control when they turn the water off, when they turn the gas on, how can you make me responsible for that? And I haven't signed the lease saying I'm renting that, how is that my responsibility? That's what I don't know, you can send me a note telling me.
It's only, it's the city passes it, it is.
I don't think they can legally pass something like that.
Yes, they can, they can pass it, don't make it right.
How are you gonna pass it and make us pay for that?
Maybe legal in part, but it ain't right.
But once again, if something like that is passed, here we go with the same subject. Um, will, will landlords want to come into town and buy rental property? Absolutely not.
Yeah, cause I'm gonna settle something, I'm sorry. Now, let me put something to you. If you're a landlord, are you gonna let somebody get ninety days behind and let them slide?
They do.
They do, is somebody else gonna pick up the tap?
We provide, we provide a service, utilities, correct?
To them, not me.
That's right, but you do too, you do too, double.
Yes, I do.
And I'm not, I'm not telling anybody. What I'm saying is that, you know, this is a great argument, and we can have it all night, but at the end of the day, whenever, uh, the perfect example right now is our sewer plant, okay, and we can't afford to fix it.
The city runs the cemetery, they run the sewer plant, they run it all, the city is the problem with a lot of this stuff.
It's their problem, I own my property, it's my problem, it, it's, see, it's the same concept.
Okay, but, so.
So if I'm gonna have to pay the bill, and then I refuse to pay it, who's gonna pay it for me? Who are you gonna get paid out if I don't pay it?
Somebody turn on the flash.
But why don't you turn on the flash, it's the renter, the renter, and they signed the contract with you. I'm not signing a contract saying I'm responsible for the utilities, the renter's signing that contract with you, not me.
Is the ordinance, is the ordinance going to say that the landlord is responsible for the utilities?
I'm not just responsible.
Okay, hang on, okay, we got fifteen questions going at once. Let me be as clear as I can on this, okay? After thirty days. After thirty days, if the bill is not paid, there will be a past due sent to the person that it's in their name, and there will also be a past due sent to the property owner. At that point, I feel like you as a landlord should go have a talk with your tenant.
They're buying it from you.
Exactly, it's services rendered from the city, not from you.
Don't they sign a deal from the city to get their utilities?
Yeah, they do, but it's...
They're signing it with you.
You know, we...
They're signing me on the house, they're not signing me.
But if we have a leak in your front yard, you'll be the, any one of your rentals, are you going to call down here and complain about it?
If what?
If our service side is leaking, are you going to call and complain about it, or are they, or are both of them?
Well, usually they won't.
I mean, I'm sorry, but we're all in this, we're all in this.
I've had two houses have broken water lines and run for a day and months, and they never heard word from the city. My gas bill or the water bill jumped from twenty dollars to a hundred and some dollars, and I never heard one word from the city. You take that much difference in a bill, you all, they all be getting a hold of somebody.
Well, I mean, I can give you all a list of what our revenues are, and like I say, you know, we can just quit collecting bills and everything, but don't come down here complaining when we can't run the water, we can't run the sewer, we can't run the...
We got too much water running all over the town that can't be fixed.
Well, I tell you what, we can pass, we can pass a law to upgrade the water.
We need it bad, we do, we do, we do need that.
Would you vote for it?
Yes, I will.
Sure.
I told a lot of people we need new water system.
I'm very aware of that.
We need a water system, bad.
So your contention is if, as, as, I'm a landlord, and if my renter doesn't pay their city bill, I'm going to get a late fee, and if they, um, neither one of us choose to pay the late, the late notice, then instead of going after them for the money, you're going to come after me.
Then we'll go after them first.
But if they, if they refuse to pay, just, just so I understand, they refuse to pay, and there's a good chance that, that they're not going to, because they're not, they're probably not responsible.
Well, I think, I think the, I think the ordinance that's set up in state right now is that the bill is due on the first, it's past due on the fifteenth, and then by the thirtieth, there should be a disconnect. Okay, so your scenario, your renter would be without service at the end of that thirty days.
At some point, I guess...
Till the, till the bill is paid.
Yeah, I guess at some...
How long, how long would they, how long would they be on the house with no utilities?
Not very long.
So we, we have a problem for both of us, actually, after thirty days.
But when they're buying the stuff from you, you got the right to go after them for the money.
But we did, what I'm saying, we should...
I, we can go after them for rent, but we can't go after them for, you tell them, you guys can.
Hang on, this is a very good question. I was in a problem.
People don't pay their gas and sewer and all, or usually people that aren't paying their rent. We have to go through not having our rent money, going through lawyers and courts, trying to get our rent even.
They even grant them two more weeks, even though they've ordered your bathroom.
Plus, they usually tear your house up totally. So we're out thousands of dollars of rent, thousands of dollars on fixing our property, and then we're supposed to pay for utilities that you guys can collect.
Yeah, and if they find out we're going to pay the utilities, then they'll leave everything running just to jack the business out.
Well, they do that just to fight anyway when you ask them.
Go ahead, Steve.
Twenty years, they let people slide, 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 hundred and twenty days and...
Right, I agree with you, but you know, this is what we're trying to do right now, because it is not fair, and I'm talking about fairness here, just a minute, guys. It is not fair to any one of you guys right here in this room right now, because every one of you in here pay your bill on time or reasonably thereabouts, but you don't let it slide thirty days. I know that, because I know just about everybody in this room. And the, the whole ball of wax is this, all of you, I believe, are homeowners. This comes right down to the rentals, and I think the only thing that I can tell you is before Alicia, our new clerk, sent out the late notices and the shut off notices, guys, they were that thick. I sat in there and I said, what is it, just a minute, let me finish, they were this thick, that single sheets of paper, pink, hot pink, so you don't miss it, that thick, with late notices. Now, it would seem to me that, to be fair to you guys, you would want those renters paying their part, that they have the bill that they put up, just a minute. And we have to do something, and yes, you're right, we have gone year after year after year after year, and ordinances have not been followed, we've got things on the books. How many of you are aggravated Washington DC right now, because we do have laws on the books, but there might write more laws, when all they have to do is enforce the ones they got? Well, that's about where we are here in the city, we've got ordinances, we got laws that are ours, that all we have to do is enforce them, okay? So, the problem is, we have a sewer plant that, and I'm, I'm not dinging anybody, okay, but in the past, and I'm using in the past, those monies might have been, when somebody paid their bill, it, it, I don't know how that billing was done, but it looked like to me some of it, if they only paid a piece of it, let's say they owed two hundred dollars on their total bill. A hundred dollars of it, or all of it, would go maybe to the gas system, and nothing went to the sewer and the water. So that left that part in a deficit, because maybe they had a little extra, you know, they owed some more on the gas system. And it wasn't right, it wasn't right to you guys, because that's your gas, this is your water, this is your sewer, okay? We here on this council are doing the, our utmost best to try to weed through, wade through the weeds, as they say, to make this fair and equitable for everyone. And if, and I know you're upset, and I, I don't agree with just every ounce of this, okay? Because I, I think we can get this down, but as a landowner, as a property owner, wouldn't you want to know if your person that you are renting to is paying their bills at City Hall? Wouldn't you want to, no, wait just a minute.
I don't want you telling me that I might have to pay the bill.
No, I didn't say that, Rosie, I didn't say that, I said, wouldn't you like to have a letter informing you that they were in fact in the arrears, which would hopefully be shut off in thirty days? And as you were saying, we've gone sometimes for what, ninety days sometimes? Or a hundred and twenty, and not had it shut off, it just went on and on and on, which, is that fair to each person in this room? No, it is not, okay? So, this council is doing everything we can do, and all that was in this newspaper this, this last week, was a, a comment, and yes, it was accurate, but we were trying to, we'd go through the weeds and try to figure out what can we do to make this right? We have to make it right, we have to be able to enforce something that's going to make it right for the people. Every person on this council, our mayor, the other councilmen, have, have stated, we've got to do this right for the people, and that's what we're trying to, just a minute, that's what we're trying to do, okay? So, we're not, we're not, we're not foolproof here, we're just trying to do our best.
Don't get the idea...
Can't make the landowners pay somebody else's bill.
No, and I didn't say that.
That's not right.
Well, that's what boils down to.
That's what boils down to.
Before you get smart headed yourself.
Yeah, don't get, let's not get ahead of ourselves, okay, Danny, hang on now.
Ben has not been putting a piper on this word, okay?
No, nothing has been...
So, don't get smart headed, whatever we can, and trust me, I'm not trying to put hardship on you guys, but like Joyce said, this is the way that it operated when I came into office and looked at them. We all remember the gas escapade, okay? At one point last year, we were a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars behind the eight ball on making our gas payment. Well, I can just damn near tell you how that happens too. And is it my fault? No. In a sense, it is, because I am a voter, and I continue to vote for these people that weren't doing their damn job, so...
You didn't look at your bills every month, you shouldn't have knew that. If you look at your bills every month, you know what's got to be paid, and make sure it's paid.
Yeah, that people's talking about...
We don't do that, if we don't pay our bills, they, we're in a trouble, you guys ought to be watching your bills.
And we are, I walked into this problem, okay?
Well, that gas bill went on for several months, and you was on there, you should have been looking at your bills.
And we had a city clerk that was telling us everything was being paid.
You didn't get no paperwork?
Yeah, we got it every month.
Well, you didn't look at it?
Yeah, I looked at it, it didn't say we were in the rear.
It didn't say they were in the rear.
It didn't say we were in the rear.
Huh?
It didn't say we were in the rear.
You held the one month to the next?
Damn right, if you want to see them, I'll show them off.
I know, but if you looked at them from month to month, you'd have seen they wasn't being paid.
Okay, Danny, I'll show you.
Huh?
We weren't properly informed, we weren't giving, given the proper information.
That's what it amounts to.
That's what it amounts to.
All joke on the books.
Hang on. Okay, that being said, what Joyce was talking about, the way it's been handled for several years, say your bill's a hundred and fifty bucks, you come in, say, oh, I've got a hundred, I'll catch up the rest in a week or two, okay? So we take your hundred dollars, and we put fifty of it on gas and fifty of it on water. We don't put anything on sewer sanitation, so the next month, same song and dance, you come in, okay, your bill increases fifty dollars over your usage for the month, because this, this month it's two hundred, well, I've got a hundred and fifty. So we put a little on sanitation, a little bit on sewer, that's how we went to having nothing in our sewer sanitation, nothing. Okay, this is, settle down, Steve, no shelter, we'll get these, we got, the sun comes up, I'll hear you play. But that's where we got where we are, okay? It was, yeah, I sat here for a year, and there was nothing but, but flowers, ice cream, and sunshine blowing up behind us. Everything was great, if there was a bad call made, my bad fixed it all, okay? Do I agree with it? Hell no, I don't agree with it, I didn't agree with it then. I made the comments, I was told not to worry about it, it wasn't any of our concern, the damn thing got paid, that's all I needed to worry about. So what I'm saying is, we're all in this together, if things like that happen, you guys need to ask questions about it, you guys vote for us. If you don't feel like we're doing a good job, it's, it's every person...
I keep track of my bills, I know what's paid and not paid every month, you got to keep track of it.
It would be nice to see this room, this full, when something good was...
That's what we courage is for, is to do the book, keep track of it.
That's what we're trying to do.
That's what I'm trying to do.
What you been doing for mu, for years, and we should never got that.
I haven't gotten it before.
I haven't been doing it for years, Danny.
Well, well, two years.
No.
Well, how long you been letting it hook?
Uh, it'd be a year and a half, if you're pretty close.
Well, you didn't say it before, from one month to the next.
Do you sit down, in your, in your book, do you look at what the accountant tells you, do you trust him?
I don't do accounting, I do it myself, that way I know.
Well, I'm not an accountant, if you want me doing the city's accounting, you think we're deep...
But you get your head to work every month, you should be comparing it, and see what's going on.
But what I'm telling you, Danny, is, we get a monthly report, okay? Most of it's work.
But you still get your bills showing what's paid and not paid, don't you? You just get that every month?
Yeah, yeah, we do, we get, we get what, what the, well, no, I'm telling you, everything was about as screwed up as it could get, and we're trying to fix it, and if everybody will bear with us, give us a year to get on top of this, it's been twenty years, it's like, okay? I'm not going to sit here and lie to you, everybody isn't going to be happy about it, but I've never seen anything where you please everybody all the time. But, I think our goal needs to be to make the city sound, so whenever we have a sewer issue and stuff like that, we can actually fix it. On the sewer deal, when we, this problem got rared up here a year ago or whatever, we owed a million dollars on that thing going into this, a million dollars, so this has done nothing but add to it, we had to raise rates, yes, we had to raise rates. Everybody's not happy about that, don't blame you, the, the simple fact is, when was the last time there was a rate increase? Jockle, Neosho, usually annually, okay? So, it has to, if you guys want to keep flushing, that's what it costs, I'm sorry. But you did hire us, we're trying to look out to your best interests, and that's what we're trying to do, it's not easy, and I apologize if I offended any of you for not giving you the right answers, but what I'm trying to say is, this is, this is rough slaving we're going through.
I know, but it just seems like you're wanting to take our money to do it.
No, no, you're going to take it from the working person, because you know the other people ain't going to pay for it.
Well, then maybe landlords need to screen their people.
I can, I can...
That's, wait a minute, that's the question, what does the city, okay, as landlord, as landowners and landlords, we do screen our people. So what system do you guys have in place, and how many of you own rentals or other land in this town besides where you live?
I work for a guy that's got twenty, you couldn't mount a four rental property owner.
I mean, I'm asking, nobody else owns rentals, just us sitting down here in this crowd, right?
I have had in the past.
Okay, and what kind of system do you have to make sure that people are good to go?
Well, that is, like I say, if, if everyone won't come off the handle on this quick, if you'll give us time to work through this, let me ask you all as property owners here, with rentals.
Well, how many property owners are sitting here? Get a hand, give us a hand, okay?
Well, I made it, have the damn room, man.
They should.
Well, I just, when you guys are considering, um, have the wording for, for what you're getting ready to do, once again, I just, um, I think that we all need to use some common sense as far as what is the overall best thing for the town, for our citizens? I mean, is the best thing to run landlords out of this town? A lot of these landlords that are sitting here in this room, and not sitting here in this room, are part of what makes the better properties, um, the best showable properties in Granby, the most showable properties in Granby, and the best well-kept properties in Granby. And if you go running those landlords out, they're not going, they're going to stop buying, they're going to start selling and getting out of here, and then God only knows what's going to be moving to this town. I guarantee you, I guaran, and, and if we cannot use common sense to look down the road and think what are the, what's, what are the repercussions going to be in the future, now I, I think we're failing the town.
Let me, let me inject something, just a minute, Liz. Mayor, on our, our ordinance right now basically gives us the opportunity to take care of our, our own business. If we would, if we would act on it, if your bill is due on the first, it's past due on the fifteenth, and if there is a disconnect by the twenty-first or the thirtieth, whatever that might be, that should shut off any additional burden on your, on, on, uh, utilities, okay? That person then is sitting there without utilities, the chances of them coming, bringing your money to you is probably, is probably pretty good, pretty high at that time. Letting them go for sixty or ninety or a hundred and twenty days is what I think has hurt the city, in my opinion, we'll probably see these reversed if we're diligent to, to disconnect on no pay. And I, my thoughts are, if, if the landlord knew that there is a, if, if they knew that there is a difficulty with utilities, Danny or Susie or Liz, they may not want that renter setting in their house with no utilities on. They may make some action, but as far as collecting, I think eventually that will be collected or go to collections or whatever the case may be. I think, I think this should, I think this should begin to take care of itself if we're diligent to the disconnect on no pay.
And, and maybe if, oh, I'm sorry. And maybe if, if there was some better screening as far as people were concerned, as far as people that do not pay their utilities, or they have a history of not paying their utilities, maybe they should be charged a larger deposit to be able to cover that.
That's, okay, well, I would like to say, in this ordinance, is, and I'm sure somebody got like this, I'll be used to it. Take, to achieve the deposit, you look at the last three, six, twelve months of that addresses, utilities, averaging one month, there's your deposit. We can't, I mean, as a whole, we can't, what, basically what I feel like you guys are asking us to do is...
One, one house, one people that miss out has nothing to do with the next person to do that.
Well, the deal is, how do you propose, any of you, how do you propose... I mean, you all have, have, have put in contracts and everything to cover your debt, okay? How do you, is it fair that Dan gets his money and the city gets screwed? Is that fair?
Well, um, but the, the thing is, is that.
I mean, that's what I'm asking. Is the, is the last month.
Who will we go to?
Hang, hang on just a minute. Last month.
Yeah, but you do have the utility. We can't.
Right. We have to go court to get our money from that person.
You're wanting to pay them. You're wanting to pay them.
If they're getting off the rail here, what I'm saying is, you said you need to make, you need to get more deposits. So I told you my idea. That doesn't suit you.
No, that's fine.
But that's called, the landlord should not be responsible for their bill because they're the ones that include it. You keep going, referring back to, well, who, who, we need to be, you guys need to be able to go back to somebody to be able to collect. Well, if we don't, if we can't collect our rent from the renter, we have to take that renter to court. We can't come down here to the city and say, hey, you know, they didn't pay their rent, so can you guys cover it this month? I mean, it's the same concept. You didn't include that bill so you don't have to pay for it.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I thought you guys are reading into this. You guys already made a deal.
Go ahead to it, guys.
For just a second, for just, hang on. Everybody just put your hands up for a second.
Funny, get under control.
For just a second, listen to what I'm saying. Don't predetermine that we're trying to screw it. That's not the case. What I'm trying to say is, you know, uh, we want, I'm a firm believer in capitalism. It's what made this country great. Danny, I want you to make money. I want you to make money. I want all you guys that have rental properties to make money. That's the idea behind it. Nobody gets a business to lose, okay? So, here we go. We want to be able to provide the service to your property and make sure that we are getting paid for it. We have to buy gas. Nobody gives it to us. The water, everybody thinks it's free. We have to pay an electricity bill on that. We've got over a million dollar sewer plant down here. We have to pay for that. We don't. You guys do. So, last month, our utilities were paid eighty-nine percent, right? Okay? So, the eleven percent didn't. So, do we ask all you people that are paying on time? Do we just say, well, we're gonna have to raise you guys a raise because we're down on revenue because of the eleven percent that didn't pay? Now, if I come out with that, how long before my phone turns red? I mean, it, it's a deal to where if everybody will, will look at this objectively and realize, if we, you know, we're starting out from square one on this ordinance, okay? We wanna make it fair. When we get it grown up to rough draft, we will have a meeting and all we'll lose talk about. That's all, the only thing, hang on.
I have an idea for you that will solve it all. Why don't you do what them firemen do? When they shut somebody off, say they owe a four hundred dollar bill, and they go to turn their bill, their electric back on, they charge them eight hundred dollars. They charge them double what they owe.
That's where I'm headed with this.
So why don't you guys do that?
And like you say, as far as, and what you said, it didn't cost us. If we turn it over to collection, you're aware of what collection costs. If you turn over a hundred dollars to collection, you might get forty bucks or fifty bucks.
Right.
So, I don't wanna do that either. Uh, the truth of the matter is, I don't wanna screw with any of us. All I want is people to pay their bill. We all have them. We all know when they're due. The plan is, the first day of the month, you'll have your bill in your hand, okay? It is past due at closing time, the fifteenth, okay? You have till the fifteenth, till the thirtieth. And all your utilities will be shut off if you do not pay. There will be reconnect fees involved. If you have a deposit on file, it will go towards your bill. But there will be reconnect fees. I don't know how many times there has been utilities past due, we send the guys out to pull them before they get back to the shop with the meters. They bring them down, city all pays the bill. They had the money, but they wasn't gonna pay. So then we send our guys back out to, to set the meters. We're wasting our time.
Target for rehooking it up. Target for rehooking it up.
That's, that's.
You have to charge them to rehook it up.
Hang on just a second.
We do set up.
This falls back onto, we're supposed to, but over the years, and I'm not playing, these girls are their down. I know for a fact the buddy system has been applied. It makes us all with aggar effects. We're trying to fix all this. We're gonna set, this is the way it is. It applies to everyone. This is what, bear with me a minute. That's the way it works.
How do you get a T for every dollar you guys lose? The landlord probably loses twenty.
Well.
That is very accurate.
But once again, that is the price of capitalism.
But that is our price. That's our problem.
You're talking about. We're just, that's the difference. We gotta go to court. We got eight months. We gotta get fees. And then we have to, we have to get a judgment. We have to figure out how to flag. It takes us a long time to get our money back to the utility. Or all you have to do is disconnect. That's all you have to do. It's so much simpler than us.
Well, no, no, no.
We have our.
That's not the end of it. Because, now that's the end of it. But that bill doesn't pay itself.
You know, by the way, see what I'm saying is, you all have your job.
Well, we're listed as much at risk as you are.
And you have a contract with it. We have our job and a contract. Now, you're talking about fairness, but you also mentioned, uh, we're a country of, of capitalism. We're enterprise. We respect private property. If you send us a notice that they're past due on water bills and electric bills or gas and such, uh, they're adults. They may not act like it, but they're adults and contract with us, they're adults, and they have a matter of privacy. And we can't go to them, question them on their private deals, how they're collecting. That's not our place. Our, our only place with them is, you know, if you wanna place where we pay this amount of deposit and this amount of rent. But you see what I'm saying? We, I can't go to them and say, I think I'm not paying your water bills. Your gas, I can't do that.
That'd be like a hospital.
That's their private.
But, but will you let them live in your house for three years not paying that bill?
By respect for private property. You can't ask us to pay their private contracted bills. That's a contract that we're not involved in.
The whole point is Travis isn't saying that. Travis is not saying that you guys have to pay bills.
This type of thing, that's what they're saying.
No.
Private property is not.
It's a matter of law. We pay our own bills. You guys pay your own.
The Osho's been.
We don't have to.
This is why you're in rent. This is the principle we're talking about. Respect for private property.
And I'm saying that.
It's American tradition.
But it's your private property. It's your private property.
He uses the private property.
I did also know, I have a little bit, okay, hang on.
Yeah, the lines want out are the ownership of the Granby, you know, city.
No.
And you have your job to collect the water and sewer.
Okay. Settle down. I am somewhat skilled in the procedure of a landowner's rights. And you do have the right to go in and inspect that property anytime you wish. You do have the right.
I can't interfere in the contract.
You go out that door.
And you have to give them notice. You're gonna go in their home.
I have the right to go in their house.
If, if you put the clause in the contract, yes, you can. And I will say this.
I've been in it forty years.
Well, and like I say, I have been around some time myself. If you put, if you put it in the contract and they signed it, yes, I'm not gonna give legal advice and I'm not gonna tell you how to run your business. What I'm telling you is, is that the city can't keep taking it in shorts and keep functioning. It is your responsibility. You chose to own these properties. I didn't, I'm not benefiting off of one bill. I am selling a utility. That's what I'm saying.
You're selling the property.
But it's a part of the rent.
And we can't do that.
But that, no, we can't. That's just like I said earlier, though. I mean, and, and people in this town will choose to not own property because of that. If you guys are, I mean, there has to be some common sense used and what is best for this town.
Are you saying this council isn't going to use common sense?
No, no, I'm just saying, no.
You said it twice.
I'm just saying, in the, in the negotiations of this ordinance, I mean, there has to be, there has to be consideration for long-term effect. I mean, and if, if that, if that is what is going to be considered and, and put in the ordinance, and, and there's not gonna be landlords buying property or, or.
You're in real estate.
There's gonna be people getting out of it.
Every third house you sell, and you lose money on it, are you gonna continue to?
But who would I go to? That's my, that's my business and that's my loss.
That's right.
Just like it's the city's business, that's, and it's their loss. It's part of doing business, just like you've explained several times. It's, you guys, you guys own the water, you guys own the gas, you guys own all these utilities. It's the cost of doing business. That's what you have said to us numerous times since we've been here.
That's right. And I'm trying to tell you how we're gonna do it to alleviate the loss. You know, most small cities that are on the stick, their write-offs are a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars a year, okay? Ours is in the thousands. Now, I, I know.
And that's your choice.
And it's ours to wish to pass this ordinance, okay? If, if you lose business over a loss, I'm sorry, but, you know, I can't, uh, I can't buy stuff for a dollar and sell it to you for twenty-five cents and stay in business.
Well, and I, I'm not looking at it even from a business point of view.
Well, that's the problem.
Fully. I said fully. I'm looking at it from the town point of view also. Um, of, I mean, a lot of these landlords, they buy property, um, and they fix up. They fix up the property before they rent it. I mean, if people are, are going to stop buying those properties and stop buying rental properties.
Well, let me ask you all in the room that own rental properties. Are any of your tenants behind on utilities right now?
How would we know?
Well, we're gonna let you know. But that's, see.
We can't even ask that question. That's against their rights, first of all.
Anytime you go out there.
Let me bring you all up to speed on something.
You're not, you'll read it.
There's a Missouri state statute on that that says I can and we can do this. And I, I will have copies of it made, and it will inform you of our rights and some of yours.
And it may not be constitutional because it's not respectful of private property.
Well, I would almost bet you that if the Missouri.
It's asking us to take.
Oh, is that statute?
Somebody else is.
It's current. Dunaway effect, enforces it right now. And I'll also tell you, their shut-off notice, it is past due on the fifteenth. The twentieth it's shut off. It costs a hundred dollars to re.
Why do you see how many houses there are in Dunaway?
Don't you wanna know as a landlord if your property is in arrears or if it's in distress? Are you just saying? You don't wanna know. I'm actually saying, you're not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's irresponsible. I'm saying.
Hang on. Okay. No, nothing's getting solved by talking over each other. So, hang on a second. What I'm trying to tell you is, we are gonna send you a notice saying that your tenant is past due.
Okay. Informative?
Okay.
Just informative?
If it were me and I owned a property and someone was past due on their bills that I thought I might be done with, I would be tickled to death with that. I, uh, personally, you know, if I own something, I keep an eye on it. I check it out. I don't just rent somebody something and wander off and cash the check every month. But I'm not telling you all how to run your business. But I'm telling you, this is the way we have to run ours. We sell things, we have to be paid for. When they said it was a free country, don't take it literally. Nobody gives the city of Granby this stuff. We function off of sales tax, utility revenue, various other taxes. Without those, we can't function, okay? So, there's no rich guy named Granby somewhere that writes the checks. It's us. Without that, we, we just can't function. So what we're trying to do, as hard as you guys are making it, is look out. We're trying to save everyone from their selves. I realize that this has been lax for years. I, I know, I know a hell of a lot more than you guys do about it, okay? It makes me sick that things have been let go like it is. We're trying to fix it. It's not gonna be popular with everyone, but a year from now, I will almost guarantee you, every person in this room will think, you know, this is a damn simple. If you will just give us a chance, don't pass judgment before.
Well, that's what I'm asking, because I think I've been misinformed. What I understood, you were gonna send us the bill and we were gonna have to pay it. You're just gonna send us something telling us just there's no less.
The property, the person that is leasing this property, if they run off whatever, we're gonna turn it over to the government. Okay? With that notice, I assume most of you get a deposit, okay? Uh, like I say, the, the rentals that I'm limited, I am informed with, the person that owns them, when somebody calls and says, I'm gonna move out, okay? And we can do this, put a revert to, your name. Instead of, okay, let me tell you what that saves you from. When you've got a revert to, you can pick up the phone, Joe Lo calls you and says, I'm moving out of your house. And you say, okay. You go over and look at it, it's clean, you're gonna give them their deposit back. Before you give them their deposit back, you call down here and say, this is me. I've got a revert to, back to, now, are there any past due utilities on this? At that point, we say, yes, there's a hundred dollars. You took a two hundred dollar deposit, you tell them, I will give you your deposit back when you go down and settle up with City of Granby. Very legal. Very legal.
Well, and, and that's fine unless they did a thousand dollar damage and you got four hundred dollars.
Well, why change your contract?
I don't know. If that's illegal or not, we're really restricted.
Uh, Travis.
You're not as restricted as you're making it out. I know for a fact.
Uh, right now, we are not, uh, when someone comes to ask to be hooked up to the city utilities, now, am I correct, Ms. Alicia? We do not check, uh, like, these landlords, they check references, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. We don't check for utilities, let's say they come from Neosho, okay? Or cha- let's say they come from T-Tulsa. We don't call Tulsa City Hall to say, hey, these folks are moving into Granby. Are their utilities up to date? If that, if she gets a, a negative on that, we don't give it until that's cleaned up with Tulsa. Or, or Springfield or somewhere. So if we, if they had, if they had to provide us with, and I know the Granby-Tulsa company does that.
That's what I'm saying. You need to have systems in place to stop a lot of this.
Well, right now, there is no system.
I know, but you need one.
I'm not trying to get it by.
Yeah, you need one.
Thank, I'm just telling you what we're working towards. Uh, this.
Nothing's been written, nothing is installed. We're just.
Running credit check and.
That would probably stop a lot of it. That would probably stop a lot of it.
We run a credit check and make sure, we do the references and all that, and make sure that they're...
I didn't hear that.
Spread it to the entire town, and everybody pay a little bit, then they expect a person that's trying to make money off the house that they're not making money on, because...
They're not expecting us to pay it.
They're not, that's not what they're saying.
That's not what we're saying.
Those that they haven't made.
I wouldn't say that. There's, I'll never say never. I learned a long time ago, I've said never about a lot of things that I've had to do. Hang on just a minute, she got mad in my...
You're dwindling, that's pretty good.
I just have a question, I, about your deposit theory, which is great, and, and I don't have a problem with that. But here's another scenario of what, okay, if you got a four-hundred-dollar deposit from a person, they, they left owing you eight-hundred dollars rent and did a thousand dollars worth of damage to your home, so that four-hundred dollars is essentially, um, very gone at that point. So then, what is the theory then? So then, is the landlord, okay, you're gonna be stuck with all the, we're gonna be stuck with all the back rent, all the damage, and then you're still gonna come after us for the utilities that they did pay?
No, don't take this pointed or sharp or anything. City of Gramby's not in the rental house business.
No.
No? We're not in the utility business either.
Exactly, we need each other, and I'm trying to get us to work together. If you guys will put back and let us get...
Well, I was given a scenario.
Well, I know, but in the same scenario, you...
I don't know why we're talking about it.
And don't take this as a table, I'm just giving you for instance, you expect me to be compassionate about you losing a thousand dollars on your home?
No, I don't expect that at all, married, I don't expect anything out of you.
I expect you to charge enough deposits and go to do the utilities that it cover a bill that they don't pay.
Well, like I say...
Right, I don't expect anything out of you, and you shouldn't expect out of us.
We're, we're trying to make this to work, it works for everyone, and everyone's covering each other. If we won't, like I said, give us a chance to actually write something up. And then, tell me it's good or bad, well, tell me if it's good, but everybody tell me if it's bad.
This is just informative here.
Yeah, this is a proposed, this is, I mean, you gotta start somewhere.
You should start with systems in place, and not worry about writing stuff up.
Get your money, I mean...
Well...
Once they find out that...
References and try to get a higher deposit.
Okay, here, let me give you a number here. Since the fifteenth, we have sent out shut-off notices, set in stone. We've collected almost five thousand dollars since the fifteenth, okay? I realize that our previous system was broke. It wasn't broke, it was shattered, there wasn't even nothing left up until what it was. But, give us a chance, it's all I'm asking, just give us a chance. Peggy, you've been patient as an old woman.
I'm one of those god-awful damn renters.
Get out!
How long have you lived there?
I have rented for, I, I started renting a place in seventy-nine. So I'm still there.
You're telling me...
I don't...
Is your landlord here?
What?
Your landlord here?
No, but I'll tell you this much, I rented from Donna and Jerry Fullerton two different times. And I moved where I'm at now, I've lived there for between twenty and twenty-five years. And I'll tell you what, when I was hunting someplace else, when I was leaving Donna's apartment, I lived in that, when I was hunting someplace else, I talked to Joyce, I talked to several people here in town and went and looked at rentals. And I'm gonna tell you right now, there was some of the rentals here in town that I wouldn't have put a damn rat in.
I agree.
And I'm gonna tell you what, it's not all the time the renters. I rented that place out there, most people know where I live. Okay, it's not much to write home about, but I've improved that place out there to anybody that knows it. When I moved in, there was a house in the middle of a field, not a tree anywhere around it. And I'm gonna tell you what, there's a lot of good renters.
Oh, I agree.
And I, I have sat here about as long as I've sat here and take it that like we're just trash. Well, by God, no, I didn't say it.
Not the point, too.
Travis, I'm not saying that, but they let on like all of us are shitless and leave in the middle of the night. Well, we don't. Joyce asked me to rent one of her properties, did you not?
Seventy-nine?
Hey Joyce, this one's more like eighty-six or seven.
Just go with it, Joyce.
I had several, I had several, it got around town that I was kinda looking for, so. I had several landlords and landladies in this town calling me and wanting me to live in their damn property.
Well, the point she's making is that she didn't give credit care of it.
Well, I mean, like I said...
But, but what I'm saying is this, Travis, and everybody's talking about, well, it's costing me money, it's yada, yada, yada. You know, okay, I'm sorry, it's costing people that own property money. I'm sorry, but I'm kinda like this too. Call me stupid or just to the side, but I'm kinda like this. If I had rental property and I was losing money every time I turned around, I'd get rid of the damn rental property. I mean, I, I'm, I'm like this. Gramby's always had a lot of rental property in this town, and a lot of it wasn't fit to live in because I don't care, Joe Blow comes down the road, they wanted the, they wanted the rental money. They didn't give a damn who they rented it to. Somebody lived there for two or three months, and they blow in the middle of the night, well, there sits the rental property. And of course, the city hall was paying the bills on it because they left. And like I've said, there's ways of doing that. And I'm like this, if I was losing money all the time, instead of bitching about it, I'd get rid of the damn property.
Okay.
Sorry.
Travis, my parents own rental property, and they had a renter that was there fourteen years. She moved out, and numbers had been paid on time and everything. Six months, when you put off the write-offs on the, in the paper about not paying the bill, she didn't pay her bill. She didn't pay her final bill. She'd been there fourteen years, never had any problems paying rent or anything. So to me, I think you need to work on trying to get a collection system. To me, that person, she moved to Diamond, it's not like she moved out of town.
That's what we're trying to do.
To me, you need to work on getting a collection, some way of doing it through, uh, the courts or a collection system. I know you're only probably gonna collect one, you can send that away. But you can't tell, and then she had the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar rental, two-hundred for gas and fifty dollars for, I mean, and she left a hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar bill. And she'd been on time, I mean, there would've been no way that my parents as landlords would've known that she was gonna blow.
We're, we're gonna work this out.
Maybe she wouldn't have left it if they had mailed her a bill, where, at her new address.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, at a new...
I will down the list, and I'll also say this, you know, our, uh, billing list...
Well, you're almost thirty days behind me to send out the bill.
Yeah, and that's, that's what...
That's a new system.
Well, that's because we're already thirty days...
That's what I'm saying, you're thirty days behind.
Behind, when we're billing...
When you give somebody off thirty days that they haven't paid, they're already six weeks behind you. You've already got six weeks of a bill.
I mean, that's the basic understanding it needs to be.
That needs to be corrected, too.
Well, there's really no way to do it. I mean, how do you build somebody for what they're doing? Well, I'll tell you what, we would if we could afford it.
I was gonna say, that's a...
It all comes back to all the repairs. Daddy's sitting there, "We need a new water system." Yeah, but how you gonna, I mean, it takes money to do these things, and it's efficient, I mean...
Well, I thought John Stilfer offered to, though he has a view on that, because he wants to do his fiber optics or something.
He, he offered, it's my understanding, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that is a drop in the bucket.
Not enough.
Yeah.
But he's gonna be digging all the fiber optics at the same time, and you guys could've been laying the water.
He won't be digging at the same time, we're, unless we get, and let me explain this. I'm gonna be meeting with a grant writer here in a week, okay? Uh, it's my understanding, what you said, that we could possibly qualify for some grants for a water system. But know this, if we do, you're looking at a year and a half before...
You see any money?
Before we see any money, and you'd be looking at possibly, you know, two years before you actually start handling that. Uh, I can't, and, and this is a, something that's exactly true. I'm not sure, and I haven't really delved into it, about the legality of, uh, municipality sharing needs with a privately owned company. Uh, I was...
But isn't it worth looking into?
No.
Not, not for what he's on, Rose.
No, it wouldn't.
I don't know.
I was told by Mr. Flynn, you know, uh, the statement was said that, you know, he wants his fiber optic below, but if the City of Gramby cuts it, it could cost us forty thousand dollars to fix it, okay? On the other side, if he cuts a gas line while he's repairing ours and does millions of dollars worth of damage. So I, I just, I don't feel comfortable sharing a need. And hypothetically, if he sells, we don't know who, who's sharing a need with. I don't want to say I've not really dealt with the legality of it, I just don't, at this time, don't feel comfortable with it. I mean, it'd be, it'd be nice to be able to do, but, I mean, I would say we would be looking at a couple million dollars minimum to do what needs to be done, uh, if it...
If you can, if you can get one written to take care of the total thing. Because in the days, we only had, I was only able to get four-hundred thousand dollars for it, and that was just designating certain sections of town that we were able to do it.
What we need to look at long-term is to, and me and Jim have discussed this in the past, is if we could ever get to where we could get ahead of the game on our funds to target a six-block area, okay? Every year, every other year, go in there, because, guys, it's not just as easy. I mean, that's just like there's water lines in town that need to be repaired. If it's a certain section, I mean, we are handicapped with a lot of small lines. And like we were talking about the other day, DNR instead, well, we recognize this. If you go in and have to repair, uh, extended section of line, you have to replace it like a six-inch mallet. Well, we can't just go do that, because state won't allow us to, we have to have it engineered. So you're looking at an additional cost. So if we could ever get enough ahead of the game to kinda do a targeted area along, and if we stuck to our guns on it, the revenue was there, in a matter of, and it's gonna be a slow process, but in a matter of fifteen years, possibly, we could do it and not owe two million dollars. But we've got to budget for it, we've got to be vigilant about it, and stay with the plan. The problem with a lot of this stuff is, just like what has happened tonight, and I've heard it again and again, Gramby's problem is, they've done this, they've leaned towards this order, they've leaned towards that. The democracy comes at a cost. Uh, we leave office or we get re-elected every two years. So we can be Johnny-on-the-spot and just be whip, bang, boom, and making progress, you know? People can change every year. Well, everything changes, the next group doesn't feel that that's incessant, so therefore stops. That's what Gramby has suffered from. And I would like to, for us to, I mean, we, guys, and I'm not making any excuses. We all knew what we was getting into when we signed up to do this. I haven't had any surprises, I knew it was this bad, I had a damn good idea it was this bad. Uh, there's a new surprise every day, okay? But I'm past being surprised. But what I'm saying is, that we will put a plan together and vow to stick to it. And hypothetically, in two years, if I'm gone, okay? But you think some of my ideas were good, you know, the deal, it's not our fault it got this way? I'll, I'll, just think about this. You put us here, you put us here, so in reality, it is your fault. If, if you know, if you don't stay informed on what's going on in the city. I mean, I have tried, I have preached about this the last year and a half. Come to the meetings, ask questions, know what's going on. If you don't, and you listen to your neighbors, well, you know, I've never heard a story tell the same twice. And so if you don't stay informed on what's going on, then you go to the polls, I mean, I don't know how many times I've heard, "Y'all voted for such and such," who is that? I mean, how do you, you know, you vote because you think somebody's gonna do a good job, and I'm...
I don't give a vote, because I don't live in town.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm a long-winded SOB, but nobody has to walk off wondering what I'm thinking about, okay? I try to be honest, and you might not wanna hear what I've got to say, but I'm gonna tell you the truth about it, okay? And it's not always, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, yes, sir, very.
I, I was, uh, listening and, and thinking about this, and, uh, I'm totally for, you know, trying, you guys trying to tighten up policies. Because that, that's what I've been advocating for years. I, I've been, I met with former councils, and so we needed to shorten the period of time, you know, when it overlap or, or the lag behind on the bills. Uh, there's been different times when I'd offered to, you know, meet and help and talk, or do some of these things, but it never happened. And I commend you, you know, for, uh, wanting to tighten up some of the past policies. I, I agree totally with it, it's been a struggle for a long time.
I mean, if we handle it like it's been handled in the past, I wouldn't say worry about it. We'd just slip along by skin and teeth. I went through my two years, uh, filled you full of dreams in two years and tried to get re-elected, okay? And that's what's happened. Uh, we've had people that weren't proactive, and I'll tell you what, guys, whether you think I'm doing a good job or think I'm a son of a bitch, I'm trying to look out for the town, okay? That's all I'm trying to do. I'm trying to make it better for everyone, and I realize you step on some toes. But if you'll give it a chance, we, we can, we can make it together. Uh, I'm not gonna look back at past policies and stick to them, just because I don't wanna offend a friend of mine, or my cousin, or my neighbor. I have, I have nothing to gain from this, and I'll tell you, it's a five-day-a-week job, uh, all day, all day, if you're doing it right. Uh, I, last week, when I was, I was meeting with somebody. Tomorrow, I'm having to take off work, go have a regional deal. But as far as I'm, you know, a mayor's never been to it.
Travis...
Sir.
I asked once before, and I'm, I just wanna be clear one more time if I can, because I've heard people in the audience say that, that you're not saying that ultimately the landlord's gonna pay the bill, and I've heard people say that ultimately the landlord is gonna pay the bill. I, I, I'm not real clear on the proposal that you guys are gonna propose. Ultimately, I, I have heard you say that, um, when they move out, or when they get thirty days behind, that we are going to get a notice as well as then if they're thirty days behind. And if they move out and they owe a bill, um, you're gonna let us know so we can say, "Hey, you owe this bill, I'm not gonna give your deposit back until you pay that bill," okay? So I understand in that part what you're proposing. What I still don't understand is ultimately, I'll give you an example, we had people that move into our, our, they never even contacted the water company, they turned the water on themselves, we had no idea. They've lived there for a very long time, they never paid the water bill. Eventually, law enforcement got involved, and, and they got charged, and, and that was great. Um, but they, they moved out on us a bunch of money, um, and, and we, we were able to collect a little bit of it. But I, I'm just trying to figure out, ultimately, is part of this proposal, we wanna be, or is it not gonna be, that the landlord pays somebody else's utility bill?
Well, I don't think that, I don't think that decision is probably gonna be made tonight. I think, uh, all this information is gonna be brought in or advised. And for my part, uh, Mayor, I would, I would, I think we oughta table this, uh, these proposals, take consideration the information that's gonna lean from tonight, and, and work at this.
That's what this is all about, that, I mean, this was never, this was never meant to be set in stone.
No.
Uh, and if we do this right, you're gonna say I'm not giving you a straight answer, dead on when you say that. But if, I'm not gonna lie about it either, if, if we collect the proper deposit, okay? If we do this, in the aspect where as we take an average, you know, whether it be a year, like I said, or like three months, six months, a year, whatever, take that average and require it as a deposit.
It could part of that deposit, as well as looking at the average on my property, being, looking at the av, or looking at the person that, their, their past history paying utility bills, like she was saying.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's gotta be a system put into play, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do all these things, like I say. So, I mean, 'cause just like Empire, that's what they do on rental properties. They look back, take the average of it, that's what it costs. And it sucks if you move into a house where they let the water run all the time, and they kept the house a hundred-and-fifty degrees all the time. And, you know, yeah, but in the end, you know, I don't know, there's no way to do this.
The landlord needs for us to get this right, because they're gonna be sitting there looking for someone to fill that rental property. And if their individuals check the criteria that they have, but they can't seem, they, nobody knows that they left a thousand-dollar bill in Tulsa, or one in Springfield. They, they need to know something that this person is not gonna be saving.
Well, the city also, is the city also considering part of the ordinance to be, um, which maybe they're, you guys are originally to this point, but requiring them to auto-debit, automatically take it out of their checking account or their savings account? Because I know some places do that, you know, Satchel does that.
We don't have, we don't have the mechanism to do this, boy.
I know, but that's, that's my point, is that, if we get in the future, could we go...
Well, we're... We don't have a check.
And, and I think most people will...
You actually not have a checking account or savings account?
There is a lot of...
Yeah, but most... Well, but most places don't even let you get a check anymore.
They don't pay this before law enforcement have to order.
That's right. We're gonna do it right.
So you're basically saying you need, we need your help and you need our help, you're wanting us to work together.
That's right, that's right, we need to work together.
Let, let me say this, I think you all's property owners know as a fact, that's because I see this as fair. So, rents due, so your rent's due on the fifteenth, and, and you get software, and you buy it. And so, you know, I've stayed a couple weeks, and then a couple weeks, well, you know, a ship didn't come in, and I'll get with you, okay? If it's, you know, three, four hundred bucks, there is a chance that their ship will come in and get caught. But I know in some instances I've been involved in, you, you get a house that's rent for a thousand dollars a month, they give you software, okay? Maybe they've been Johnny-on-the-spot until that point for years. You let them get a month behind, they'll never be caught, it just won't happen. If they couldn't afford it that much, unless they've been deathly ill or something like that, there are circumstances. So if you, if you let your tenants get a couple months behind, you're pretty well aware, not naive enough to think, all of a sudden, they're gonna hit the lottery and everything should be great. But they might hit the lottery, but you'll never see them again. But, like I say, guys, we're trying to make this fair, and if you'll, let's say, you know, we as a council, we're not throwing hands on all this stuff. This has, uh, not been the most enjoyable evening from start to finish, I'm sure. But what I'm trying to say is, we wanna make it fair, but on the other side, what happened earlier with that young couple, uh, that's the hardest decision I've ever made as a mayor. But I also, uh, that setting precedence, once you start, you put something into motion that can't be ever changed. And that's what Gramby has suffered from. And that's what Bramby has suffered, is, well, you know, I mean, did I enjoy what?
We're trying to change this, so why can't that be changed?
Yeah.
Well, you know, we can change every word that's on the books, we've got it, we hand. But like I say. Would, you know, I can't. We've just, you know, there's. I think the long section, Revell, I think you're too close to it. Mark.
First of all, just a few observations. First of all, I think you and I have bellowed each other enough, at least for tonight. You know. I'm gonna go ahead and bring up what you did on the police board next meeting, of course, you know, and I'll be in Mr. F. Third of all, what you're doing is you're making a proposed, you're seeking input to a proposed ordinance. It's not set in stone. Is that what you're saying?
I've said it about a hundred times.
Okay. You might be talking about letting people, you know, the landowner or the landlord know that their renter is far behind, hasn't paid this particular bill.
It's been discussed.
And spent forty-nine cents or whatever on that.
It's been discussed ten times.
All right. I wanted to get the number of the RSMO that you were pointing at in a case here. You had an RSMO, so I was just wondering what it would, but maybe I'd go ahead and ask later.
It will be, it will be explained whenever we go into closed session. Don't just forehead and gang.
All right. And then, last of all, I want to point out, when you were saying that you're not gonna set something stone here, pretty well, you simply seems to have had something set in stone earlier. And you end up running off a homeowner who is not a renter, who probably would have presumably paid the utility bills.
Well, if I had a crystal ball, I'd go invest in the stock market, but I don't. And one thing has not a damn thing to do with the other.
Well, of course it does here.
No, not in these two ordinances, don't try to connect them because they're not connected. That was a totally separate deal than this utility one.
I would, I would make a motion and take this utility, utility, uh, leaning.
What's your opinion?
We can't.
Oh, hell no, the sun's getting ready to come up.
We have a motion and a second call.
I was just gonna suggest that we have a work session rather than.
Well, the first thing I want to do is turn this over to our attorney. Like I say, everybody's ten steps ahead of what we're, we have to do. Okay? I, I hope that I've at least answered one question.
Yeah, that you have no sys, you have no system in, I mean, you admitted that you have no system set up. That's great. I think you did a good job.
I mean, we're, we're working towards it.
Just saying I'm happy, okay?
Like I say. Thank you, Sid.
Just move on.
And when you've made her happy, you've done something. Get sad, Sid.
You gotta have a system.
Wait a minute, Mark, go ahead.
Could you put number thirteen, you know, essentially next so that Mr. Gross can get out of here? I hear it costs a hundred dollars an hour for him to have him sit around.
We'll, we'll get to it as soon as we can, okay?
I think it's great that we found him. My little friends for six years have been finding. Called him every day and couldn't get a hold of him. I did. That's Tony, I'm now.
Bill, your ballpark needs picnic tables for buildings.
And sleeping bags and shit, though.
Go ahead. You got the floor.
Thank you, quick. Come on, now, hurry up.
I'd like to take and get some picnic tables down there at the ballpark and have one. If you want, all that, that cupboard. Anyway, probably for around twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars and take it out of parks and recreation if we have to. The picnic tables that's down there is the ones that was in the park years back that the skateboarders tore up completely. I mean, they're sad. Plus, they need more.
Where were you considering putting the pavilion?
Over the picnic table. I would, I would say up there around by the concession stand, everything else. I got, around the concession stand.
Yeah, give me the rock, I'm gonna, I'll take the rock.
Well, talking pavilion, is it, is it acceptable, is it, would it look all right to use a portable carport over a?
No, because you'll be out there changing your oil.
Heard that one. Just anything that's got some shade to it and everything all where they change the tire or out of rain.
Was there a specific location for all of these things?
Of the bleachers.
Do you have the bleachers?
Let me, Travis, let me add this on. Joe was really looking to make some adjustments to the ball field. He wanted to put a, bring in fans in, put a new fence around one of the fields, the one for north. And I think with what was left, he wanted to start some, some shelter over the, the existing bleachers out of there just to put it in the shade. I'm looking at the total cost on, on that, and that's to add another pee wee field and, and get it finished. You're looking at twenty thousand dollars total. And then that's the, I think it's nineteen thousand for the fencing and they put in the new field and then put the, with the rest of the money, put the tops over the bleachers. And so, it, it kind of goes along with Bill's doing here, and I, I don't know if we're. Well, I can get with Joe, I haven't really talked to Joe yet. I just, you know, I just, when all was down there, when they had the ball game and all, and you was doing the hamburgers and tacos. I was just looking there at the picnic tables where everybody was hovering around there trying to find some place to stand or sit down and eat, you know? Just, just like you got shelters down here in the park or something like that, if nothing else, you know?
Might actually suggest we get Joe with the next meeting.
We get Joe for the next meeting, go on, go on.
Might be wise.
All right. With that twenty thousand dollars on the pee wee ball park, the funding for that, will we try to get that through Tiff or will we try to?
Well, I, I was, I, I was, if we could manage it through the Parks and Recreation, that'd be great. Because I think Tiff, the hands are, the hands are gonna be full with projects within the maintenance barn and the community building and those types of things. So that's what I'm gonna try to do.
Okay.
The fencing is what is most costly, and then the dirt work and the, and the building, the pee wee field.
Okay. Let's get Joe down here at the next deal. Do we have a motion or a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. If someone would make a motion to move thirteen to eight, and move eight to thirteen.
I'd move, I suggest, all right, never mind. No, I'm not gonna make any motions. I'm gonna move that we move number thirteen up to eight and eight down to thirteen slot.
That was easy for you to say.
I'll second it.
Huh? Okay, twelve thirteen to eight.
We don't have a, we just the government.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Four and O. Mr. Gross, would you like to come from, for center? Do you remember? Do you care? Do you have anything you'd like to complain to me about directly or?
No, 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 I mean, you've heard enough.
I've never heard enough.
The proposal I gave to you, let's finish out the Tiff and cover it back. In terms of getting bids together, trying to get out the, the maintenance shift, uh, community building. And including, we did the ordinance if we decide to buy some additional property. So what I've offered here is a contract to get everything done. And I did, I did my five dollars upfront, and I'm gonna get paid while I get it all done, whatever an hour long that takes. So I'm trying.
So long as I drag it out, so you're not done? Better off. I like it, guys.
Well, and I don't get paid the same thing I need to feel like. Basically, quite a bit of work that we've got, but to me, it's a end game. If I got to how many years ago when I did this, getting this done is important to me.
Okay. On A, section adding, it's just a complete project. The vetting of all of the projects, like the lamp lights and sidewalks and the carpenter, everything and everything.
You don't, you won't have another bill from me for anything. It all, I'm doing everything. Hopefully.
How much is that?
Yesterday.
It'll be my job.
Can you tell us? Can you tell us how much that bill is? I'm just curious.
I could.
Would you?
If I understand this correctly, the total is fifteen thousand.
Correct.
We will pay five thousand initially and ten at the end of the road.
When we get it all done?
In five years.
And then are we done at the end of the road? In five years? With Tiff completely?
The Tiff ends in two thousand twenty-one. It's over, you can't, you don't have any choice at that point.
And did you have us twenty years or twenty-five years?
Twenty-three by law.
Yeah, we need, that'd be good, and he's in five years.
Pardon?
That's good.
I detected a little bit animosity in the background.
Exactly. You couldn't get a hold of him.
And where have you tried to get a hold of me?
I tried to get a hold of you in oh-six through oh-eight to redo a set of buildings we had, the front, and to use the money.
And you talked to me?
I left you numerous messages. And I talked to, at your answering machine, and I talked to Donna Fullerton, she gave me your number, Joanne gave me your number. There were several people.
Really?
Yeah. Numerous times.
Interesting.
Well, can you corroborate that back or?
Thanks, Rosie. You pay big into it and can do.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract with Special Turquoise, Daryl Gross. Now, it's sort of a fifteen thousand, five thousand to be paid upfront now, in the balance of ten at the end of the day.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Wow. Thank you, sir. Okay. Lot of bids, I've received two bids.
We're catering. FYI.
Uh, my question would be. Are these just independent bids? At one point, I know our audit firm, but they can seek bid for. That's it, okay, this is. KPM out of, I don't know. KPM, they're out of, where are they out of?
Springville.
Springville and CPA group, I know where they're out of, they're out on it.
Are we, are we finished taking, taking bids on this, do we?
I personally'd like to meet with Brad and ask you one more problem.
We were talking about the money.
Okay, here it is. The estimate of our gross fees, including the one thousand dollars.
Making a move on the table means to be at all.
To give it to you, so he can get it. Will second it, get it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Have you saw a bid, so we get a chance to meet with, uh, Green Associates?
Three eight nine?
No.
Oh-six, oh-eight.
Okay. Number nine. We received a warning letter from DNR response from, from Mr. Cogman, the sewer operator, maybe. My understanding is when we had three, four inches of rain in twelve hours. The way this actually works is, our plant, we've got it in the, I'll just give you all a quick hack on what it is. We've got scheduled to start down I and I, which is inflow and. Go ahead, Jeff, open your ear.
Your story. Infiltration.
Infiltration, there you go. And we've got some, we have seen over the last two major rain events, that our flow at the plant drastically increases during the event and then peaks off after the rain event. It's my understanding, what I've been told by people that are quite a bit smarter than myself, is that is a flag that we've got some inflow. Infiltration comes from the ground and seeps in. Anyway, whenever we didn't have a solid release or anything, but when you have to shut the plant down because we were bringing in, we were two hundred fifty percent, over two hundred fifty percent of our design on the plant. You have to shut it down, divert water into the service basin and just hold on to it because it's coming in faster than it could be treated. When you do that, regardless if you have a solid release or not, you have to turn that in to DNR because they look at it, when you turn the switch off, you got an issue. I was assured by Victor that our, we didn't have a bad release or anything like that. I was down there the day after, surveyed it, for what I know, the water was clear. We got on top of it, put it out and everything turned out. But nevertheless, anytime anything like that happens, you have to report to DNR. Their receiver and their tag on it. No, no, blame it's ours. So that is what that is about. We are on schedule to get to I and I, where we can tell about it, find out where we're the hole is in our city. Thanks, guys, appreciate you coming in. We have started, we did, it is, my understanding is, it would be fruitless this time of year. We need to wait until end of July, first of August, when everything dries out, so, so you can, you'll see your infiltration at that point. The I and I, as far as the inflow, we're just kind of physically looking for it. And I wish Chad would hang around for a second, just to, because I found one on my property that I wasn't aware it was there. Guys, if you got a cleanup lid off, or if you see one off, nobody's gonna get in trouble, but call City Hall and tell them what the address is. And I don't know that there's any of this going on, but it is an ordinance, I'm sure some of them. I'm sure it's probably just happening. If we have any storm drains and stuff, you're gathering stuff, don't run it, sir. And there's probably some that are, that's, that's a no-no, because that's, that's where we're getting all the problems. If you see a manhole cover off or broke or something like that, report to City Hall or call JAM. You know, report to City Hall's the best, the best if you've got an address. If you see something like that, it'll only help us out and it'll, it'll save us all money in the end for something very apparent. And we can, I know like a house that's possibly, you know, been moved or burnt down or something like that. I mean, we're, we're checking these as we can, but, you know, I'll just be honest, that plant was a mess and it's took two guys. and it's took two guys, I mean, we paid a lot of overtime and just trying to get all that square. We're, we're getting, I won't say we're turning the corner, other than we're getting ahead of them, we're making good progress. I feel confident that we will turn the corner, but any, any help or any problems, you guys see, if you just call City Hall, I appreciate it, we all would. Okay, that being said, uh, FYI, spring cleanup two thousand fifteen. The cost of it was twenty-seven hundred twenty dollars, the income was eight hundred seventy-five dollars. If we can make money, lose money, but it, it is a, it is a good thing for the citizens. But, uh, this isn't, all the agenda or anything else, I'm just going to kind of let the cat out of the bag on this. I have been speaking with a couple of, uh, waste management companies that pick up the trash. And inquired with them if they would be interested in putting a bid on grain. One of them, in our talk, told me that, you know, they will pick up stuff like couches and stuff like that, which a lot of the stuff we got at spring cleanup. Most of it is no charge, if it's giant, there'll be a minimum charge. And all you gotta do is pick up the phone, call them and say, you know, if they come to your house on Wednesday, next Wednesday, I'm going to have this set down. Both the companies I spoke with provide the little dumpster thing, like if you go through Diamond, you'll see all of them set up. I think that would help in several ways. We now, and I know it, it means a lot of, uh, people being discouraged, but we have a three-bag limit. Well, some of the reason that is, is, you know, we've... Four?
Four.
Okay, how long a lockdown? But we have to pay when we go down there. Our sanitation deal is not really a money matter. I mean, it brings money in, but at the end of the day, by the time, and I'm looking at it from a long-term standpoint, where right now, you know, we've got four guys in public work, okay? Two of them are, are tied up Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, from seven-thirty to noon. And a little bit of time on Thursday and Friday to get some of the commercial stuff. We're strapped as far as being able to hire more people. I think we can come out basically about the same shape we're in now and not have fuel costs, not have the manpower loss, our losses, uh, be able to provide a better service as far as being able to provide the dumpsters and stuff, which in turn makes the town look a little better.
I think on the trash truck.
Yeah, uh, we're still making a payment on the trash truck. Excuse me? I can't tell you that, they're gonna, they're gonna have to bid it, uh, Jim gave a guy a tour today, the other ladies booked a check in City Hall, give some information. It's gonna be, that'll probably be a couple of months down the road before I have any number. So, I'm just thinking that, it's just another deal where we're not making any money out of it, and we're losing manpower that we could be using to, and I know it's easy to, you know, the water leaks, the this, the that, the streets and all that stuff, but guys understand, you know, we're strapped for personnel and we're paying, you know, we can't, we can't afford to hire companies. So, it would loosen up Jim's schedule to where we could, I feel like get a lot more done and, and count.
The twenty-seven hundred, is that just the dumpsters cost?
Yes.
Dumpsters and the way, the way out of time.
So much per dumpster and then so much of time.
Was, was the dumpster full?
Yeah, about all of them were full.
Yeah.
I mean, we had, we had a good turnout, and, and I'm, I'm glad that we, we can do that. I mean, it helps clean up the town. And I know on this, the flip side of it, you know, it's expensive to get rid of that stuff. Used to, you could, we had, you know, years ago, I actually remember, we had the old city dump out there and you got rid of it, but anymore, you can't do that. And I know it costs to go to the transfer station and all that stuff, regardless if you got a milk jug or a load, it costs basically the same. I think this would, this would work all the way around. Like I said, the fuel, the upkeep, that truck's getting some hours on it, some years on it, you know. I know for a fact you have the engine in that go out, we're at a twenty-thousand-dollar expense, so, uh...
Nine years?
Nine years.
And not only that, you have a lot of aggravated people calling City Hall because the trash didn't get fixed that way.
What?
If the trash truck goes in.
Yeah.
Because you don't know, if you put your trash out, it doesn't get fixed.
I can do it.
It's actually a good thing that you're looking at outside.
Yes, and, uh, I can, I can tell you this, I spoke to, excuse me, Diamonds, they use four different companies, both of the companies I talked to. It's originated kind of news for the last three or four months, you know, there was a little stir up in Seneca, getting everything tuned up, and then I, I got it from not only Personnel at Seneca, but the, the trash person. Some of the miscommunication they had, and this is something I can't hit on everyone. If you guys got a problem, I want to hear about it, okay? But also, if it, if it's something like your, well, your utilities and stuff like that, the first going to make is right down here to City Hall. And some of the problem they were having was a lot of the citizens, what we call it, police department, are halted. Well, you know, I'll admit, I've got pretty good memory recall, when you get about fifty things going on in your head, you rebound and forget something. And, you know, I'm not, like I say, not knowing all the circumstances, but I'm sure if we go through this, there will be a period where it will be them trying to tune it up and get everything right. So, once again, this is just like everything else, we've been confronted with, yeah, there's change and, and, you know, it's human nature not to like change, but I just think that we would, and it would still, the way, uh, they chose, they said they would like to do it, and I think it would be beneficial for us too. We would still take care of the bill. It would still, you wouldn't get a separate bill from them, it would still be us bill. And then, uh, it's my understanding that we collect the money and then we pay them. So, like I say, hopefully they can come in there, uh, close to what we're doing now and benefit everyone and kind of get us, it can only help if we can get in their money line.
If the city does the collection on the bill, is there a rebate or a percentage that the city gets to keep?
Well, there definitely, and they, it varies town to town, uh, you know, of a total like, the one company that does Bellavesta, they keep like twelve dollars a cask.
Twelve dollars a cask?
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean... Yeah, yeah, but, uh, it's, hang on a second. It is one of those where I think, long-term, people benefit, that's a lot. It might go up a little bit, it might not, I can't tell you, I can't promise you anything. But let me touch on this, and what I've read and what I've seen, there's going to be a point in time where small municipalities like us, all of these waste management companies own the land of us. And there's going to be a point in time to where they're going to make it so tough that they're going to have your business whether you like it or not. And with EPA, DNR, all the stuff, the regulations that they're passing and changing daily that are just absurd, it's going to happen. So, I feel like right now, i- if it's an option, you know, it's, I don't want it to be, you can pay me now or you can wish you had.
Travis, you think we should, we're going to put this discussion on the agenda for next time?
Well, I don't know that we'll have one in relation.
Yes, we will. We will, from that one company.
Yeah, but I don't want to have several before.
Right.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to, uh, I want the bids to be in, I don't want to show, you know, that's, you don't have the bidding process.
They're going to, uh, work me up a, basically a, a bid proposal so that everybody is bidding the same thing. We don't have one company bidding this and one company bidding that. It will be down the line, apples to apples.
But let's, let's get everything in hand before we speculate. Speculation is what cost, cost us an hour and a half in discussion. Martin?
Uh, you're talking about them keeping or giving back to you twelve dollars and maybe some cessnous?
No, no, no.
I said, company done Bellavesta done. We don't have any numbers, any figures whatsoever.
Right now, I think, you know, my trash collection bill is, what, nine dollars and eighty-five cents? That's a good deal, less than twelve dollars and eighty-something. Talking about if you contracted that, you're going to pay a good deal more.
Speculating.
Well, no, I mean, I do know, I heard the figure twelve dollars and eighty-five cents, and I'm looking at nine seventy-five, I mean, there's a difference about three dollars there.
Okay, let me reiterate. That was an example, and whenever I get some numbers, I will announce them to everyone. So, don't get your tail in the air before we know anything. I don't know a damn thing what it's going to cost, okay? As soon as it goes up for bids, then I'll let everyone know.
And they did not say anything today as to what it would cost.
No, so we're just purely speculation on all this. Okay. Any more questions on that? Discussion, cheering, eggs thrown.
Number eleven.
Number eleven. City Hall will be closed July third, and observance of fourth of July.
Back on number ten. Is there any plan to have another fall cleanup or...
I'll be honest, last year, it was far from popular. We really took a bath on last year. I think there was like eight dumpsters out there, and I think there were three that were full. We still had to pay two twenty-five for the impound. It was just, it wasn't, I, I thought it would be more of a success than that. I mean, I'm open to suggestions, as long as we know ahead of time, probably in months or something. You know, if, if people feel as though we need it, give them a call down here, and we'll, you know, we'll do a check-in about it. Probably, you know, if, if the need arises, we'll, we'll try to work it out.
On the whole purpose, if you clean up grain, you know, if, if there's no benefit in the fall, you don't have it.
Yeah.
If the spring is...
Yeah, I mean, the spring ones have been very successful. And we all accumulate a lot of stuff over the winter that we want to rewind and look at.
Whatever.
Okay. We jumped around a little.
We need closed session.
Okay, I need a motion going to closed session. That was proven, Mr. Rose.
The motion is going to closed session in front of ordinance six-ten.
Hold your vote.
She's hungry.
Go ahead and say that.
A quick one. While I was outside talking to that young couple, I know you passed and went ahead and bought some new people on the police board, uh, I would like to, well, two weeks from now, I'd like to make an appointment to have you reconsider your decision.
Point taken.
Don't try to snake back for two weeks, two weeks, like, he might change his mind on the devil wife on the trail.
The point Mary move I brought up was ordinance seven-eight-nine needs to be passed.
Are you talking about the devil wife?
No, no.
Bill's hilarious.
Bill is hungry.
Ordinance number seven-eight-nine, an ordinance of the city of Grandin, Missouri, approving a contract for professional services with Darryl Gross, DBA with Gross and Associates to provide consulting services for the tax increment finance district. Whereas the Board of Alderman of Grandin, Missouri, by ordinance under six-four-two, passed on May twenty-six, nineteen ninety-eight, approved a redevelopment plan and established a redevelopment area under provisions encouraged grant of the city under Missouri by statutes ninety-nine point zero, point eight zero zero through ninety-nine point eight six five as amended, and whereas the development plan is a comprehensive program intended to reduce or eliminate liability and enhance the tax basis within the redevelopment area throughout the implementation of the separate redevelopment project described in the redevelopment plan, and the adoption of tax increment financing in the redevelopment area for such redevelopment projects. And whereas the Board of Alderman of the city have taken steps to implement the plan with success and have removed some liability conditions with the redevelopment area, and whereas the Board of Alderman desired to complete, approve projects and have assistance with such projects so as to remain in compliance with all statutes related to the TIP. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Alderman and the city of Grandin, Missouri asphalt. Section one, the Board of Alderman do hereby approve a contract with Darryl Gross, DBA Gross and Associates to perform the duties as described within the contract. Section two, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to execute the contract and take such other steps as needs to fulfill the obligations of the city. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective from and after its passage and approval. Passed and approved this twenty-third day of April. Of, uh...
June.
June, sorry, twenty-fifteen. Sorry, we accept.
Got a motion in a second. I think if you accept this on second, we...
Ordinance number seven-eight-nine, an ordinance to the city of Grandin, Missouri, approving a contract for professional services with Darryl Gross, DBA with Gross and Associates to provide consulting services for the tax increment finance district.
Motion accepted, second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, ordinance seven-eight-nine, second.
You did it. I did it. You want to do it again? You want it closed session?
Yes.
Make motion one, closed session, in ordinance, uh, ordinance six-ten, point zero-two-one, paragraph two, in reference to leasing, purchase, or selling, or real estate. I'm second.
Ira Hopkins?
Yes.
Will Barrett?
Yes.
Going to closed session, nine-twenty-eight. Back in session at nine-fifty-two.
Ira Hopkins?
Here.
Will Barrett?
Here.
Travis Campbell?
Here.
Bill Cooper?
Here.
And Joyce.
Here.
Summarize the closed session meeting. There was discussion about property, no decision was made. If I got anything else?
Property about buying, property for the TIP district.
Hang on a second, it was about to be the property we were discussing, but...
For the TIP district.
About seven o'clock, your wife and, uh, Kim Murray's wife was out there, they were stripping every flower off the grave. And I saw your wife jerk a metal thing up out of the ground. And I told her, right by my mom and dad's, and I said, my mom and dad's hanging basket and those metal things better be left alone because those aren't, they're not supposed to be a problem with them if they're above the ground. Right at the cemetery, what's the ordinance, I mean, they have to be where they can mow around the tins.
They have to be where they can mow around and.
These are at.
Okay.
They shouldn't take the saddles or anything, should they?
No, were they taking the saddles off?
She jerked, I, I'm sorry, she jerked a metal piece up that was right behind my mom and dad's. I'm not very happy with the whole thing.
Okay, the ordinance states the flowers are supposed to be, all the flowers are supposed to be off a week after.
In the hanging baskets and the saddles?
No.
It.
Not the saddles.
The saddles aren't before you get as far ahead of yourself there.
They're supposed to be able to mow them.
They have to be stuck right up against the base because to be able to mow.
Should probably refer, go to the, uh, cemetery board first and then see what kind of, see if you resolve it before we ever come here.
Well, it's odd that while you guys are all in a meeting, that they're all out there just stripping those graves as fast as they can tonight. And I'm sorry, we paid money for them.
They're probably, they're probably preparing for the next mowing time.
They, they mow today because I'm, I drove out there today, there's a little section that's not mowed, but all the rest.
Well, just to clarify though, by ordinance, a week after the mower, that all the flowers are supposed to be.
On the ground, on the ground, but not the saddles.
Like I said, I, I recommend you take it to the cemetery board and get it resolved.
I can do that.